Hey, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, July sixteenth. Like to call the meeting to order. No one for invocation this morning. If you please stand and join me on a pledging.
The pledge of allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes? Did you guys have a chance to read the minutes from Tuesday, July ninth, twenty twenty four? If so, do I have a motion to approve?
Absolutely. Is it person?
I've. All second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments? Can I show you this?
I would just mention that I had a chance to go to the Exeter Council of the House. And that was very nice. Of course, also a good addition. So. Very welcoming reception out there. I also had a chance to go to the like a welcome thing for the new president of Highland College. Very nice man, and I think they're in good hands. And they actually have a new finance director and another guy at the title, but they have three new people in their administration and. Look like really dynamic group. So that's kind of encouraging too.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I had a N E K environmental. Meeting that was Thursday morning. They debuted their new website, which was absolutely fantastic. It has, it's interactive. We can. Go right into each county that's a member into their own county website. So it's kind of a one stop shop if you're looking for. Forms for either what they provide or the county provides, you can just click and go right on over. So I haven't had a chance to really navigate it myself, but. It really looks phenomenal. I'm excited for that. And I have a N E C A P meeting this Thursday in Hiawatha.
I have a project concern meeting tomorrow at noon. And that's all for this week. New business. Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent, Department update. Loganman Road Decision and Purchase Order of approval.
All right, we. Have. Two of the three legs of the base one project done. Depending on weather, hopefully will be done by tomorrow. Spencer's working on the low water crossing. Marlada is getting ready to repair the. Damage to the. Erosion on the walk bridge. At the Indian Hut, Wilson Clark. And it was gonna start today, but you know.
So the walkway got damaged?
No, so underneath it's been washing out.
Oh.
And it's been coming around and washing out. So they were gonna put a rip rap. We did a P O mid this. Long time ago. So. Any questions about any, any of that? I mean, we'll be starting. Hopefully first week or two of August on the chip and seal. I want to try to get that done before school starts. Is our game plan except for. The Cheyenne and the other two smaller areas, they've got to wait six to eight weeks.
So how many, what's the timeframe when you start doing that if the weather holds? Is it?
Well, as far as chip and seal, it, it, ten days.
Yeah, it goes pretty quick.
Ten days. I mean, it should be done. But like I said, that's, and then we've been continuing to do some patching. On Ottawa Road and south, and we need to do, we need to address. The low spots at the culverts on. Two eighty six. Because we've had, I've had two commissioners say something to me about that. We've talked about, we've got to get this project done before we can. Move forward.
I think that was mainly their concern is semi-traffic and, and before fall harvest. So. I, if we can do something, I think that's.
Just when roads drop or something.
Well, well, before we, before we. Did the micro seal. Where they put in culverts before, there's low spots. And we've, we need to go in there and. And do all the best to level those up so that it doesn't hit so hard. And it is in a, in a regular vehicle this month. You feel the same.
You can see the target. You get the big truck and you hit it, it. It bounces it.
Right.
Loganman Road, I'm waiting. Through my contact with K dot, they have a process they go through on how they determine everything. We've looked, Roger looked for the agreement from nineteen sixty six and nineteen seventy between. Atchison County and K dot. And they are doing the same thing. They're trying to find it because they would like to have the agreement. And then move forward. For that process forward. So as soon as I get that information. We'll be, I will get it to you guys as quick as I can. On what their intentions are to do to the road and who, who would be maintaining that until I get that, I don't want to speculate on. The information I've already got.
So did you call them off on putting millings there yesterday?
I didn't call anybody off on anything.
Because they started putting some millings on part of it and. When I showed up over there yesterday, they were told they had to leave. Somebody had called them and. Complained that nothing should be doing, anything, anything should be done with that route.
I didn't do that.
Who, who was there working on the road?
State was. I bought that property. I don't know why it's such a secret up here. I have been into Roger's office, talked to Jack back to sixteenth of May when I bought that property. And the agreement was. After watching the meeting on, on YouTube last week. That where the drop off is where everybody seems driving a ditch up there, it sounds like. From there, south is state road. And when I bought the property, there was an agreement that the state, state was going to come in and fix it up. And I watched the meeting last week and now the county's got their nose poked in it. Saying. Maybe they maintain it, maybe they own part of it, whatever. So. There was an agreement before all this come up that they were going to come in, put some millings on it to get it enough where I can get in and out of it. To get the hay in and out. And I did that. I hated. Property looks totally different. The whole thing looks totally different now than it did a week ago.
It looks a lot better. I drove by there. It looks good.
So. Anyway. I have been to Roger's office. Nobody. Claimed last week that they haven't seen anybody, haven't heard anything out of anybody. And I have been there, have not. I left my name, phone number. I was like. You know, whatever is there, I would, I would like to know. And Jack told me, he's like, well, if I take, I've got plenty of information that whatever I take to the commission. That. They were like, why, why don't we already have this in process? So I was like, why don't you contact me before it goes to the commission? That way, everybody knows what's going on. If there's any kind of dispute before it has to involve you guys and. Hell, I gotta hear about it on YouTube. So I don't know what's going on there.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know why the county's involved at all, except that once the state does their thing, they're going to give us the roads, my understanding, right? And so, so I don't know why we just start to notice.
Well, that's, so that's what I found out because I've been, I've been in contact with them up in Horton since this. And they own the right of way, but there might be some kind of agreement where the county was supposed to maintain or maybe maintain it.
And that's what, and that's what I'm waiting on. He had told me that the owner. Had been out there and done permitting. But then the permitting, all I'm waiting on is. Them to send me the information on the agreement, but it has nothing to do with us stopping work on the road or any of that.
Well, so I, I give these, I give the state an option. I'm like. I think the county's got plenty to do. I told him, I said. I'll help you out, whatever. I said, you guys get it figured out, I'll maintain it. It's not a problem. I think, I think I'm more than qualified to be able to do it. And you guys can concentrate more on what you need to be doing. Because you made, you made a comment, I think it was last week or week before that, how horrible the gravel roads are. And they are. And I think. You know, everything that's been going on with the county being two point six million dollars over budget and everything. Pay it all more than help you out and let's not waste a bunch of time on a dog road down here.
I know that K has processes and the way they go through it. And I was told sometimes they get the agreement.
Don't let in for me. That's, that's one option that is on the table.
Okay, but that's.
And the reason it was on last week's agenda is because Mr. Hagaman called me. Mike Hagaman from K dot called me and said, hey, how do you feel that your commission would feel on if the state does a road? Would the commission approve on maintaining it, doing snow removal? And I'm like. You have to send me information before I'm going to just, you know, and so he sent that to. The map of the frontage, which is, he said two fifty eighth on the, on the phone. It wasn't. It was, this is the map from Mike Hagaman, which is what we're talking about.
So I don't think there's any dispute on who owns what. You guys gravelled that from Pickman's driveway north and, and my understanding, that is correct. You know, and then the state owns that from their south. And then with the agreement, I bought the property that the state was going to. You know, get it fixed up, you know, enough. Where, you know, I can get in and out. And then we were going to kind of cross the next bridge from there, you know, whatever happens.
Yeah, that's, that's all we're doing is waiting for the, for them to notify on. Us on the agreement and what the process would be and who would be responsible for the road. So.
And what is the process? Because Hageman called me again yesterday. He had like three things to follow up on and he's like, do you have anything from your commission? I was like, well, we only meet Tuesdays. So if the state builds the road up, will we be maintaining it?
So the superintendent up there is who I've been talking to. Is going to let me know as soon as he knows exactly. What is. What is going on?
Well, I see one issue just to bring up here. You're talking to Hageman. He's talking to superintendent. He does getting two reference points here. We need to have one voice.
Well, here's the deal. K dot is calling me and I'm saying, we have a meeting. We'll discuss it. So I can't control who calls me.
Appreciate it. You would refer those calls to Joe. So Joe's handling. Those issues. That may be part of what gets confused, I think, sometimes.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
I blind C C'd you into Hageman. So you knew. I can't control who calls me and asks me what my commission will do.
But all I'm trying to do is, is go through the steps with them and I am being told. How they do it. And I've worked there. I know how they do it. And when he gets me the information, I will share all the information. We're not trying to cause a problem with the road. We're just trying to find out. If they, if they can't, I say they can't find the agreement. Just let's just say, let's just say it doesn't happen. Then the two parties have to sit down and decide, okay, if they're going to rebuild the road. Will we take care of it? That's a decision you guys would make, not my decision, but it's my place to bring that information to you. So. But I talked to Matt yesterday, Jody, but I have no jurisdiction to tell K dot to stop doing anything.
Well, I don't know. That's just what I was formed. I came in up there and I was. Tickle to death. Somebody was doing something. It's, it's kind of like what I watched last week when you said you visited with Pickman and they were like. Hey, is, you know, is there anything we can do? You help a guy out. So they were helping me out. And they got called off.
Yeah, well, I ended up going by that area about four times yesterday, not because I wanted to. And I, and I saw him out there. Yeah, I didn't think much about it. And then now that you say that, I'm like, okay, that's weird. I'm glad.
And I did bring some pictures of it if you guys would like, like to see. And. If there's anything you guys want to see, I'd be more than happy to meet you down there.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't even know you were the one that purchased it. So. I have no idea who purchased the product.
I don't. There's one thing I don't understand in all this. Process of. Putting all this information together. And, and I think in certain instances, it would be pertinent that. You and, I guess you check into. Part of your info would be. Who bought the property or who owns the property that, you know, that, that the road or something is affected on it. It's not very hard. Registered deep is right over there. You know, you probably don't even have to go up there. I'm sure that's probably pulled up. You know, I think that'll be part of it. You know, and, you know, like I said, I, you know, I said, I was watching the meeting and Roger said, no, nobody's ever been up here. In fact, I had, I can tell you the exact date, May sixteen. I was up here and I actually been to the appraiser's office. They gave me a parcel number and I come down and Roger went there, but Jack was there and I left my name and phone number and. So. Which leads me into another part of discussion on the property. There is an address to that problem. He says there's not, but there is. And I have proof of it. In two thousand and eight, there was a water meter installed on that property. And in order to install that. Water meter, which is through the city. The city had to have an address for. Okay. And it's sixty six fifty Loganman Road.
So let's probably fill it, assign that address back then. Phil Burke, I bet. He would assign.
Well, it would probably have to come through the county.
Well, he can assign, he was assigning addresses too, but now they work together to do that. So I'll bet that's where it started. So.
But, but anyway, that.
Sometimes it's not going to get recorded as well.
Yes. And I mean, I, and if you want to see it, I, I got it from the city.
Then be good to give to Roger and Jack and so they can make sure it gets entered in all the database. That affects EMS and everything.
But, you know, so, so there is an address for that property. And that's why.
Yeah. And that was sixty six fifty?
Sixty six fifty Loganman Road.
Two thousand and eight.
Right, two thousand and eight. Matter of fact, I think.
No, no, I just, I'm just.
I needed to do the day.
No, that's, that's fine. It's just it was city water meter, they had to be putting, like they needed an address, two thousand and eight. That's the one there.
It was September. Fifth.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need, can I give you indication of a timeframe it would take them to get that?
No, but they're working on it.
And I also did talk with the state this morning about what went on yesterday while they had to pull out. And I'm like. You started it. Is there any way you can come back and kind of? Finish it a little bit, you know, because I don't know how long this process is going to take. You know, the, the worst part of it is just right there where that breaks off and goes down there really, from there on the road is not that bad shit. Other than, you know, brush, get some brush cut back. It's not.
Yeah, a lot of stuff's grown up in that fence line.
Well, so from what I found out from past. Retired personnel from the state was the last time any maintenance had been done on that road. Was about fifteen years ago, which would have been back in about two thousand and nine. So, and the state actually did. Maintenance on it.
Are you going to have any change of what that property's been used for that would affect the use of the road? I mean.
Depends on how everything works out.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, that, that would make a difference on what. You know, in the future, what? How much, how heavily traveled and loads and.
We're, we're, we're kicking around the idea that, that stepdaughter stuff that her husband might build a house up there. But.
Yeah.
You know, when, when that's going to be, don't know. There's a lot of other stuff that's got to be. Ironed out and that's all part of it. So. Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's, that's all I have. Living, I have a purchase order.
With Roger.
Yeah, he should be there. Yeah.
If they're not come back. Okay.
Yeah, he should be in there.
Thank you.
So these purchase orders, they're, they're with invoice, however you want to read them or you want me to read them. But they, they would all be.
Okay. Okay, so I have some purchase orders. That. I will look for approval on. This is part of these, these purchase orders are for the six hundred and sixty six thousand fifty eight dollars. That we reduced the road and bridge budget for twenty twenty four using ARPA funds last year. So these will go against. That. So I have. One to prove construction in the amount of thirty four thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. For the low water crossing on two hundred and fiftieth. To be paid out of ARPA funds, got a motion to approve.
So move, say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
That competing?
No. No, it's just one thing.
Is this weather still strewn out up?
It's not helping, but he's trying to get through it.
Remember this one is.
Straight south of my house, or if you go down one fifty nine to two fiftieth, past Monrovia Cemetery. That'd be about the easiest way to.
Yeah.
Hey, I have a purchase order to Comanche Construction for the alternate bid deck rehab final payment. For Bridge M dot zero dash twenty six dot four, in the amount of a hundred and fifty eight thousand. Seven hundred and sixty eight dollars and thirty eight cents to be paid out of ARPA funds, got a motion to approve.
So. Thank you.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
They didn't get a chance to go down there. They end up, it's so much better.
Yeah, did you drive up the gravel?
Yeah, no, way up there we are. Could be any concerns about access to get their crops in there out. Yeah, I was gonna say, it could be all right.
I think it would be good.
I have a purchase order in the amount of twenty eight thousand eighty two dollars and eighteen cents. For the base bid, bridge, deck and rail repair final payment for M dot zero dash twenty six dot four. To be paid to Comanche Construction out of ARPA funds.
And that would be damage caused from the wreck.
Okay.
I just want everybody to understand that that, that's the remainder for Comanche on the.
That one we approved last week.
No, last week. But there's, but there's more to it. Yes. So it was forty four. If you look on that sheet.
Forty four, three, four.
Yeah, and then this is the, this is the final.
Okay.
So it's just above the insurance limit?
Yes.
So. So we can use our money for this because it's repair?
Yeah.
Okay.
So all of these purchase orders are, are for the ARPA to six hundred and.
My concern was if there's insurance reimbursement coming on that.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, just.
You couldn't get it back. Yep.
Yeah.
Got it.
I'll clarify that.
So do I have a motion to approve?
So move, say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. Hey, this will also come out of the ARPA for, to Schwab Eaton North Rail and Overhang M dot zero dash twenty six dot four. In the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and thirty five cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Absolutely. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. You know, overall, what that.
I will have.
Okay.
I will have.
Everything's really done. There's no follow up anywhere up there.
Well, there's, yeah. If.
I was just curious. So I see they put lodging. On there. Is that just because they?
Same as extra.
Okay.
Because of the. Uh, extra work, the damage, I would believe. And then when you get done, if you will hand me the. One that has a hundred and forty some thousand on it, maybe I'll give you some of the, the invoice. I may be able to get you some of the totals are very close to that. So the two invoices. For Comanche. So we'll do our last one and then I'll kind of explain this.
Okay. And then a purchase order to be paid out of ARPA funds to Foley Industries for water truck fully. Rental base one rotor pairs in the amount of two thousand three hundred and fifty five dollars and sixty four cents. Got a motion to through.
Some of, say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. You can see room.
So our, our part total was three hundred and five thousand five hundred and sixty three dollars and thirty three cents. And then the. Crash total was seventy two thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars and eighty cents.
Can you tell me the first one again? Sorry.
Three hundred and five thousand five hundred and sixty three dollars and thirty three cents.
Thank you.
And if I sent this to you, so. When you. Right here, Casey and everybody else can see that this would be the total. This is what we've paid and this is what we're finishing up paying.
Okay.
And on the other sheet shows the same.
You know, there's been several accidents. Yeah, around that bridge. And is there anything you could do differently there for that? I mean.
Well, it's been signed for the, you know, K dot. Standards. I mean, the big thing is if they're coming from the east, they're just. Like this one, she was just wanting to jump the.
That's what they do.
The jump to levy, you know, and I don't, I don't know.
To reduce the hazard or something.
Yeah, and we've, we've replaced guard rail on this two or three times and. Nothing seems to, to slow them down.
It's a. Place where people enjoy, right? And is that usually off hours and alcohol and everything else can have it.
Okay, you had sent us.
I've sent several, so you'll have to refresh me.
So you sent us. An agreement between the county and BG Consultants for the. Topography and utility survey. And the pro, to include the property lines of the twenty five acres as well as the corners of the forty.
That's the way I understood that as I read it. And the first one, see, I'd had them send us one for the forty acres at the very beginning to give us. You know, if you want us to have somebody else do it, that's fine, but they were there, they're doing the engineering. I just got the quote from them. So then when I, when it. Dropped to twenty five acres, I asked them again, and there's a thousand dollar difference. But they're in that email, which I forwarded everyone, it explains their thoughts on that.
Did you have it? Well, there isn't a forty acres. I mean, there's an eighty acre trap, right?
I don't know. Is that what it is? I don't know.
It's eighty acres for a trap. Yeah. So, well, so there aren't. There isn't. There aren't corners marked, what would be the forty.
We wouldn't need it now that we've lowered our. The amount that we want. We only need to identify what we are surveying off, which would be the twenty five acre.
Yeah.
Not, but I think they're going to have to go from the entire trap to twenty five.
Right. So that needs to nip there.
Not from the forty.
Forty would be the eighty.
Originally intended. But that's. That's. They're issuing this.
Yeah.
So.
They got to use your markers to be able to.
Right.
So as far as calling for a motion, are you okay with how? Okay.
Is there any? Thing that, that we need to identify the original flurry? For the city or. E dag or the.
I don't think so.
I mean, would they need to know? Where those are.
I just, the final, the final piece we buy is all that matters. I mean, and then I'm assuming that some kind of survey markers in our corners and.
Yeah, I mean, then.
Find out what they're doing. Eight foot tall corner, you're trying to out there mark these things though.
So this is, this is why I sent it to everybody. So if there was any questions that, that I didn't, I didn't know, feel free to tell us. We'll do something different if you think we need to.
You're good. You're fine. Okay. Okay. So I'd look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the supplemental agreement, number one, to consult between Atchison County, Kansas and BG Consultants. For the Atchison County Road and Bridge Maintenance Facility and Site Programming and Planning Services. And the, to do the topography utility survey. In the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars to be paid out of ARPA funds, to have a motion to approve.
Absolutely. Start.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. Three to zero. Okay. You sent us. Water. Okay, you've sent us water. Uh, utilities as well.
It's probably, actually not until you have more of a, not knowledge of which one to go with.
So do we not to, um, give Joe authority to move forward to get? Utility, I mean, to get things going, cause ARPA funds have to be contracted by twelve thirty-one twenty-four. So like if we're gonna get a bid on grading or fencing. Or running utilities.
Get those estimates, yeah, I didn't know, my question was, do you have to have the survey back before they can actually do their jobs, or can they tell well enough?
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, they may want to survey before they can do a topo or do a grading. But as well as utility connections, I mean, they could probably do some estimations on that already. I would, I would authorize you to go forward with that.
I would disagree with that.
If we, I mean, I mean, you go ahead as far as getting the estimates and know what the costs are and all that.
Well, we haven't.
Well, if we wanna wait, I'm just, well, Joe was sitting here, he sent us this information from Rural Water and from, um. The face electrical, like we, we just gotta give him.
From Brown Electric. Brown Atchison.
What, what's your opinion on the three phase versus?
I don't know enough about it to give you an honest opinion, to be quite honest, I think that we ask the engineers, we tell them this is what we have. And I can possibly talk to Jason and ask him. Yeah, I think that's something that, uh, we need to get a better.
We got an engineer.
If we don't, if we don't, right, if we don't need it, there's no reason to pay for it. That saves a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. I mean, we're still probably, you know, we'll have to put a transformer up and stuff like that, you know, but we're not paying for all those poles and all that, so.
I would reach out to surrounding counties that have relatively newer, modern shops or, or, you know, and. See what they've got, I mean, is it?
Do, do you have that contact?
The Lyon County?
Yeah, can you send that to me? And then I'll, I'll get ahold of them and ask them what they did, if they're running overhead cranes and stuff, they probably did. You know, the big one that, uh, I remember talking about was the exhaust fans for when you're running your equipment. When you're running your equipment in there, you're supposed to put a hood over your exhaust and then it, it takes it out, that was, I, I remember that, so. But, uh, I will, I will try to find that out as soon as I can, so.
Um, question on, so the Brown Atchison Electric quote that they gave us. Thirty-five wooden poles, is that for the underground?
That would be for them bringing, uh. Three phase from like a mile and a half away to our facility.
Okay, so that is.
That is the cost of.
So thirty thousand is.
Let me see here, it should be all in there. Scroll up so I can see the bottom of the total. Yeah, that should all, that'll all be in that, that's all.
That goes with the letter from BG.
So if we do single phase.
It's, everything's there.
Some costs, a little bit, but nothing. We bring in underground, right?
Well, it's there on a pole, but yes, probably would be best from that pole, everything underground. Well, then you're not tearing, you're not tearing lines down and you're not. Having those issues, somebody raised the bed up and.
I'd say, proceed with single phase unless you get some clear direction, then we can talk more about the three, the three phase.
And so we approved the survey, so you'll kind of give us a time, like get with them down.
I will do that tomorrow.
At this point, all the other attachments you sent us, we don't need.
No, it's just information that I had that I wanted to share.
Do we need a motion to move forward with getting some?
There, I wanna get estimates. Yes, like the fence. This is a budget estimate, unless you guys. Until, and I don't know until we discuss further into the budget, then if you, I just want to give you budget information. But if you're wanting more than that, then.
Well, my only concern is if we have seven hundred. And thirty-one thousand ARPA remaining forecasted to expense. We have to have it encumbered by December thirty-first, so I'm just wondering.
Under contract, so we got, we can be contracted by then, we have time for that.
Well.
I think that those funds ought to be expended to help reduce our tax burden with the seven mil increase.
Which I'm not, I, we'll have that discussions coming.
No, but it's all intertwined, I mean, you can't say, I mean.
ARPA's been on there every week, so I just, if we're going to get bids, like, so if you go out and get an estimate from someone, hey, what do you think it would take to grade this, right? You know as well as I do, you like, you have to do a bid.
How we're bid, how we're building it, what kind of product we're using.
And we're doing work right now, literally right now, that was bid in April, that said it would be done by June, and it's August. I just.
So, so let me ask you this. So we get through today, cause there's discussion about all of this today, can it end up today? And we can, is, you think you'll be able to say, I need you to do this?
We need to, yeah.
I mean, so is, so is that, so is that, I mean, we get through today and at the end of the day, you can say, okay, Joe. This is what we, we need you to do, and then we move forward, that way, possibly some of these questions, which you guys have to answer. You'll have the opportunity to answer and figure out what direction you wanna go. Would that be a fair way to do that?
Maybe we do an RFP where it's a package of. Fencing.
Okay, so I'll just wait and when, for the meetings over today, then you guys can give me the direction you'd like. Well, I'm gonna be here, so, okay, all right? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so ARPA funds discussion has been the standing agenda item every week. Um, and the finance director gave us a snapshot this morning, did you wanna? It doesn't have you, but I assume.
Yeah, just.
Facilitator of that discussion?
Going through, um, how much ARPA money we have left, kind of doing some forecasted expenses. Um, we still have the void group, um, our contract with them. We've been helping us with the ARPA dollars, making sure we're in compliance with all of those rules, so we still have that project. Um, the sheriff is finishing up the graphic panel upgrade. Um, there's some preliminary land costs in there. The other courthouse renovations and some of the other, um, expenses that you guys have approved. Um, there's a couple other placeholders, like the EMS ambulance. Um, and then the surveying costs that you approved today. So that kind of gets us down to about seven hundred thousand. Well, north of seven hundred thousand, so. Like you've been saying, we've gotta get it in a, some sort of contract by twelve thirty-one. Um, otherwise we have to figure out what else to do with the funds, so. No, I just, I just updated it right now, since you just approved it today.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, yeah.
That was my reason to be here with ARPA.
Okay.
Nothing specifically on the agenda, but I had the placeholders we talked about last week.
Would you mind coming on up and talk about that?
Guys for that, we talked about mechanical CPR, which had been something we wanted to modernize since I took over. So I did have a demonstration, I'm familiar with all the CPR machines on market except for the gold bottom pulse. So we demoed that yesterday and they gave us a quote, uh, actually really, really impressed with this device. Um, there's other devices out there, um, some cheaper, some more expensive. This would be not the most expensive option on the market, but it's close. Uh, the quote here is for five devices. Um, this device in particular, I think, fits our need better than the other ones. Because of our topography, the way the town's built, the age of a lot of the structures we go in and out of. This device allows us to provide CPR without interruption, no matter what position the patient is in. They can be sitting, they can be supine, we can invert them, as a matter of fact, if we had to, we come down elevators, we come down in stair chairs. Up in any number of ways, most of the other devices on the market, you're gonna have to shut them off to accomplish those tasks, this device you don't. This device is also integral with a patient moving tarp, which we use frequently. Where this is already integrated into the device, we put the person on this machine, we strap them down, we start the device. And we can lift them, carry them, we don't need any extra equipment, so I was actually very impressed with this, I'd never been around this particular device, so. That was one of the placeholders we talked about, so I wanted to give you an update on, on that.
So is this a brand new technology, or is it out there or the never?
It is an update on old technology, uh, this is their newest device out there, they had another device before this. Um, mechanical CPR, just for reference, is the gold standard in providing care to people in cardiac arrest. Human beings tire. Um, as a human being providing CPR, manual CPR tires, the efficacy goes down drastically. Um, so mechanical CPR doesn't tire, so it allows, uh, the most efficient possible means of circulating blood in the body. Uh, without interruption. Uh, right now on manual CPR, we're trained to do two minutes and switch providers. Well, that switching providers, you lose all the blood pressure, you lose all of your efficacy. This device never tires, it never stops, so. But yeah, I was actually really impressed with this device. I've seen the others use the others, uh, we have mechanical CPR devices currently that were donated by Levonworth County. Uh, they're very bulky, they're hard to get into structures, they're hard to get people out once they've been applied. Uh, they're not effective in most situations inside structures, uh, this device would be, it's much more compact.
So I'm assuming because the other ones are cumbersome, they're, by the time you deploy them, it's probably easier to do manual CPR.
Yeah, with the device we currently have, um, now there's others on the market that are much, much smaller than our current devices. They're gonna be similar to be able to deploy in this, where I think this device we demoed yesterday differentiates itself from those, it's not having to stop. If we change the patient position. The other devices, when you set them up, are gonna have to be stopped, if you have to take them downstairs, they may potentially have to be stopped, this device, once it's applied, can just go.
And life, between life of these is like fifteen years.
I'd expect a fifteen year.
Okay, sure warranty or guarantee?
One year.
That all?
That's all, uh, we can do service plans, these would be something we'd also put on our normal PMs. Our heart monitors, our COTS, um, all those devices, we have qualified technicians come out once a year. And service these, these would have to have that service contract too, so there is ongoing costs with these. Uh, one, I'd say con to this particular device is other devices don't have any disposable supplies. This device does use a disposable band that wraps around the chest. So you'd have a hundred dollar expense with each patient it was applied to, where the other devices would not have that expense, so.
So I asked you right away, is there a billable code for that, because it's disposable and, uh. It's kind of a, sort of a half yes and no.
Well, we, we don't bill, uh, per item, we don't itemize in that way, we have tiers of billing. So in most instances, uh, this device would be at our top tier of billing. Because it's gonna be used in conjunction with a number of medications and other interventions that a cardiac arrest patient would need. So it would be at our top tier billing devices. Our billing schedule, excuse me.
And batteries last, is it fifteen years, or no, no, I'm sorry.
I, uh, don't know what the battery life's gonna be on these, I can estimate based on other devices, we usually get a couple of years out of batteries on typical devices. The lithium ions have helped that, um, they don't develop a memory like the old nickel cadmium batteries did, uh, so we get longer battery life out of the lithium ion. But, yeah, and batteries are proprietary, all of these devices, regardless of brand, they're not gonna interchange with any battery system we already have, unfortunately. No matter what we go with, and lithium ion batteries for medical devices are extraordinarily expensive, they're about fourteen hundred dollars apiece.
To me and your, our, our inventory, I mean, your number one resource of your people and how they're trained, and number two things. Right, one of these right here.
Yeah, this has been something we, we've wanted to, to update since I took over, we, we had a placeholder with the, the devices that were donated to us. That advanced us, but, uh, they're archaic, by, by medical terms, they're museum pieces, you know? You, you know as well as anybody how quickly medical technology moves along and makes everything you have obsolete.
Yeah, it's been, I think, light, light speed, it's crazy right now, um. Service plan, what do you, do you get an idea of cost for service plan?
Probably gonna be in the neighborhood of probably a thousand dollars a year for all five of them on, on an extended service plan.
And they come out of here, calibrate them and.
Yeah, check them out, yeah. Uh, this would probably be included on our current sole service plan on our X series monitors that we still have in service.
Gonna say we've been a lot of business with them, I would think that that would be kind of rolled into like one call or.
That's exactly how we do it, yeah. But the PM checks, the service every year is, it saves us a lot of liability. We can always go back and say, listen, we're, we're doing our due diligence, our equipment's maintained properly, things do fail.
Yeah, this takes a lot of pressure off your paramedics and EMTs too.
It's a manpower increaser.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it reduces liability.
Skilled hands can be doing something else while this machine handles that, and, and that is critical. Defibrillation and chest compressions are the most critical elements in cardiac arrest patients. So this gives the paramedic, the AEMT, the ability to manage airway, to administer medications, and it, it's just. It's, it's a force multiplier, really. And it's tired, people don't realize how physical an activity it is, and that efficacy wanes very rapidly as people tire. And that's why mechanical CPR has really, really been pushed by American Heart Association and the industry as a whole.
Yeah, I would, I would support this, I think, very easily.
So I'd look for a motion to approve, um, the purchase order as presented from our emergency, um. Services Director in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy cents. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
That'd be on the budget for the following year.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll negotiate that with them to continue right along with our others' old equipment.
When you bundle that, maybe you'll get a better deal.
All right. Thanks, Tori.
Thank you.
You wanna talk about the ambulance for a second?
Oh, yeah, I almost forgot about that, the, the ambulance bid spec is up, it went up last Tuesday. Uh, the bid closes next Tuesday, and because I won't be available next Tuesday, I've asked Michelle to schedule that. Bid opening for the thirtieth, correct, of July, as I will be gone. I've had a couple companies already contact me and ask some questions, so. But the, the bid specs, I, essentially identical to the last ambulance, it's just updated by year. With the chassis year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, as opposed to the last time we did a bid spec was twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. No changes in the spec whatsoever.
The options on there to pay for it all at once, or you do have.
Yeah, we talked about ARPA all at once, or maybe half ARPA now, budget for half going into the next year.
It'd be budget year twenty-six probably, right?
Potentially with the, the delivery time, I'll, I'll know what the delivery time is, um, I've been told some ambulance companies are eighteen months out.
Yeah, I would doubt it, I think they've always taken a long time, I mean, they've never been fast, haven't they?
But then the, the chassis backlogs. It's just horrendous to try to get anything.
We'll just sign that and I'll stick it in the folder first, and, thank you.
But that's all the update I have on the ambulants.
What about the building that has been proposed at the, for the rescue?
Uh, I've gotten my line drawing and my terrible, terrible, uh, ability to draft. And Roger has helped me with that, uh, he sent me back an estimate at, uh, just, just over half a million, so.
Yeah, that's another conversation.
That's estimate, that's, that's all estimate, so.
How big a building is, I mean, I don't think any of us have seen any.
No, I, I have, I sent that over to Roger, cause it's, it's by no means professionally done, not my wheelhouse, but. It's by no means professionally done, not my wheelhouse, but I think it's sixty by eighty. Uh, then a twenty by twenty, uh, room in the back for Michelle's election equipment. Can't remember off the top of my head, but like a, a fifteen by ten storage area for the rescue, and that would be four garage doors.
How's that gonna affect parking?
Uh, it'll reduce our parking, cause it'll have to be out there on that west edge, we'll still have the parking on the east side of the EMS facility. And my thought was, is, uh, do you know where the dumpster is on the west side of the storage building? Pave that area out in there for parking, so we'd still have essentially the same amount of parking for when. We utilize the EOC for conferences and such, so, but yeah, it, it's gonna reduce the parking, without doubt. It does appear that the, the room exists out there with the property lines, though.
Can you expand the parking on the east side a little bit, is that, is there a little more room back there or not?
There is, but it drops off quick into that crack, and it's pretty swampy, it would probably take an extensive amount of fill to make that suitable.
My support of this will have to go right along with the road and bridge facility, I mean, part of that was to. A long-term plan, and so, one thing fails, it affects others, so, what we can do and we can afford, so. Now the existing rescue storage area building. You've got that all cleaned out, it's more.
Cleaned out, we reorganized it, um. We've, uh, sold some unnecessary equipment that was being stored in there. So, yeah, the, the facility is more functional than it was. You still have some equipment parked behind other equipment, and it, it takes some extra time to deploy it if need be. But it's, it's improved.
It's better maintenance after you're checking things and you.
Got, got, um, Dustin Falk was promoted to rescue captain, take over that, what we formerly called OIC. Wow, he is out there day in and day out, and he was a good choice.
He will do a great job of that.
Really happy with Dustin, so, he has taken a lot of pressure off me, so.
I'm very con that too, I think it's a long-term. Plan, and cause there's other things to take care of before you can get out of that building, but, uh, finish it three years or four years from now, I don't know when, but yeah.
And it, it's an estimate process, it's not as if I've invested months in it, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Scott Howard, uh, IT Director, Purchase Order Approval, VMware Licensing.
I don't have the few on front of me, but, um, it did go up considerably from last year, um. Broadcom bought out VMware and they cut the licensing that we used to use. And so now we're on a subscription basis, uh, for the renewal and maintenance, and so it's twenty six hundred forty one. Um, we do typically, we pay this for our, uh, our servers and whatnot, this is the, uh, layer that it runs. So that we can, uh, essentially we run all of our servers on three computers or three servers. And this is what allows us to do that. Uh, twenty six forty one, seventy two.
And that comes out of your budget?
Yep.
Do we have any alternatives to that going forward, I mean, is there a time?
Not at the current point in time, um, there are no really suitable competitors that we could switch to, I've looked at it, um. If we do switch, it's more expensive to, to switch than to pay this, so.
Yeah, they kind of, they have you. That's what it is.
Hey, look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented from our IT Director, um, out of. The IT budget for VMware Essentials Plus Licensing Renewal. Um, in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars and seventy two cents, do I have a motion to approve? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Sixteen, seven, yep, I just had to look on the last one I signed. We have five minutes until our.
I need to rest for a break.
Okay. Right, I do have. We still have a couple of minutes. Or we must, forty five minutes. Okay, so we have one minute, so Commissioner Rivas, um, has called a forty five minute non-elected personnel executive session. So.
You ready?
Yep, I think by the time we're, we're red and in there, it'll be eleven.
Okay, I'll move the, the Board of County Commissioners recess you executive session. Uh, ten fifty nine to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that, and that purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session forty five minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners. Prazer, Merton Bridge, Finance Director, HR. County Counselor. Transportation, GIS, IT, EMS, and Maintenance. I'm not missing anyone.
Okay, then move to seconded, all those in favor say aye. Yeah, double check.
I think you're in, you're there.
Okay, we are back in open session. Um, next on the agenda, I had put on here the revenue neutral rate notice discussion. Um, just wanted to revisit that, uh, we talked about in a workshop last week.
Thank you all.
And we were currently, sorry, I was pulling up my notes. So we were currently, when we added the three percent cola in. At sixty two point four seven four, uh, mils. Uh, which was three million, basically, over, um. But as far as cutting, we've cut everything that we've identified, um. Through our budget worksheets and workshops, um, so really it takes sixty two point four seven mils to run the county. Operations, so just wanted to. Visit about that, because I think you guys were leaning toward the fifty seven mils last week, which was. One point six million dollars difference, um, and just. Looking into that, it's either we cut one point six million. From our county general budget, or we supplement it with cash like we did last year. Uh, with the six hundred and sixty six in, in road and bridge, but that was staring at us. You know, back in the face this year, so, um, just wanting. I mean, trust me, taxes suck, nobody wants to pay taxes, but it takes sixty two point four mils to run the county. I mean. We, we are holding ourselves accountable, we are going through every fund of the county, we are cutting, we've cut and we've cut.
Well, actually, we have, we've added two, we're not spending less than.
So when we, when we went through, listen, when we went through all of our department budgets, sorry. It was probably maybe even before you, but they had emergency reserves, right, within each line item, like. For the public to understand, we go through each line item with our departments and. Are there other areas that you found that we can cut? That I'm missing, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, but. When it's framed as, it's cuts, it's only a government is. Plus over about a million and a half a cut. I mean, if you look at it from the taxpayers' standpoint, they're adding a million and a half even at the fifty seven. So how is this a cut?
Well, so those are the things I wanted to, to understand, cause two years ago, we didn't send out our notices, so we lost four hundred and sixty. Four fifty and change, right?
It was about two and a half mils, as I remember.
So.
Well, the year before that. How we remember this, we basically had no increase in revenue in, in our tower. Total revenues collected for two or three cycles, is it two? Cause we, we held it another year.
Is it be our third?
It would be third year. So last year we did go up. Before that, it was, we went up to, like, two years before, is that right? So. So let's go back, let me see, this twenty twenty roughly, right? Since when that started?
It would have been for twenty two's budget.
Good, well, so it's twenty one for twenty two. So what happens is. How much is a loaf of bread in twenty one compared to now? I mean, everything's gone up.
Yes, sir, hundred percent.
So I totally get it, so, um. I understand it has to go up, I really do, I mean, the cost of oil, the cost of all this stuff's gotten nuts. But at the same time, so we do, we are going up by one point. Two or whatever it is, I forget the number, but yeah, so we're going up, but we're, we're just gonna have to. Keep, keep costs down, we're gonna have to use a little bit of cash, we're gonna have to blend both together, and what I'm hoping is, over the next two or three years. As inflation slows down and things get better, maybe more efficiencies can be found. Got titrated, now a little, a little bit of cash now and a little bit of tax, maybe a little less cash, a little, a little less tax next year, but I mean, you can't do it in one year. But everybody's gonna have to buckle their belts up pretty good here, we gotta, we gotta really find some, find some pieces.
And that's, I guess that's a concern to me of. Last year, you know, we, we were sitting here actually with this almost exact same scenario, I think we were in the sixties. Because that's what, because that's what it takes to run the county, right, of like. And, and we did the same thing, we're like, okay, let's use six hundred and sixty six thousand of, of cash from ARPA. To offset the road and bridge, so that it looks better. But then this year, it's, it's back, it's rearing its head, and, and so that's why I'm just. I guess I'm nervous that if, if we're supplementing it with cash. We're gonna be sitting in these same seats again next year.
Yeah, his budget's not gonna go down.
And inflation. It, it values have already been predicted to be up, right, like, so. And wages, we're never gonna go down. On personnel services, I mean, I guess I'm just. At what point, like, are we just honest of, it takes this many mils to run the county? And then also.
Fifty seven will be the mils. We already know that.
So, so you're gonna supplement it with cash?
No, I'm just saying we gotta, I think there's probably some cuts, um. I think it's some of both, I don't think it's one or the other, my, my suggestion, and I talked a little bit with Mark this morning about that. It's just like, of course, I've been thinking of almost nothing else but budget in the last couple of weeks. And how we would do this, and if we, if we used another six hundred and sixty six thousand. Put towards it, we wouldn't be any deeper into that hole that we were in. Would add, it would actually be a smaller portion of the budget, because the budget's much bigger. And then, and then do the cuts, and you'd be in nine hundred and some thousand instead of a million and a half cuts. So, at, at that point, then you, you use that after we supplement with the cash.
So where, where are you thinking that there's cuts? I'm just trying to understand, cause I've been sitting here with you guys at every. Department meeting.
I don't, wasn't probably gonna say it right now, but my suggestion was that. And I don't know what the figure would be, what the percentage would be, what we would need to cut. The possibility of, of a just across the board, if it would be a three percent. And then the department heads know. What they can do better than we to get into the nitty gritty, so, and this is just. Kind of me thinking without vetting it out, so.
No, this is good, a good conversation.
Uh, and I know that's very. It varies from department, department, what they can do with that. So I'm cognizant of not saying, well, you know, it's very small department like, uh, HR that has very little wiggle room. A three percent might be impossible to do, I don't know. But if it, and I'm guessing at that figure, I, I haven't ran numbers. But I, it was just. I think that would be the way a business would look at a deficit. I, I, I think that would be, if, if a percentage would be doable. And then. I don't know how we would next year. Even try to start maybe something earlier or start. On, on, how do, how do we get out of this? Behind the eight ball type thing, cause it seems like, since. Uh, again, I said this mark, this morning, since I've been here, and it was fifteen going into sixteen budget, it was the first one I worked on. Every year, there seems to be a no crap moment, when we're scrambling. That we're gonna be way behind. And every year until so far this year. There's always been something, we come out, we haven't been to attend, even though last year we forecasted. Uh, and we published that, and we seen the, uh, the public concerns about that. But we got down to a tolerable number. I don't know if, if, if this, I guess I think what, uh, Alan was saying also that. Trying to feather our way out of this, so instead of a ten this year. If we would have more of a plan that, okay, it's gonna take four, four and four. We get to that point where it's a tolerable, tolerable increase. That isn't so noticeable, because you go up ten in one budget year, and it's like. I'm not willing to do that, and I don't. And I don't know how we get around it, that's the way my mind is working around this.
Yeah.
And I I appreciate your thoughts.
I love the years of thoughts, cause that's where my mind is based on dollars, right? And and the process we've been through, and I can wholeheartedly say, we've been through the process and ask all the questions and, you know, with everybody. And and to see that big of a difference, I'm just, it's nervous, cause. The way the numbers sit, where we ended up, what our budget needs, we are at the sixty two point four. And if that's what it takes to operate the county. I just feel like supplementing with cash. Although it it feels better, right, but. My concern is when the cash runs out or because our. The cash we're supplementing with, the ARP is gonna be gone, right, and. Any anything else, we're not generating additional cash, we're not letting it work for ourselves, so eventually it's almost like. Hey, I own a house and my. Grandpa's helping me pay and then my grandpa passes away, I'm stuck with the payment and I can't do it. And that's what I'm fearful of the taxpayers of like.
That's fair.
Then then when we're helping, helping by supplementing cash, and then when we don't have it, and then it's like, well. If this year it is what it is, and I think we're saying the same thing, cause you said behind the eight ball, I don't wanna be, that's where I feel like we're at, right, of like. How do we just, this is what it takes to run the county and we we're we're levying the taxes to pay what it takes to. To run the county.
When. When the public also and I look at. These amounts of money that the county has. You know, and the proceeds and and all of these things, and then it's like, well. Why aren't they using some of this, you know, uh, that's where it's. Um. That was difficult not to explain why. We and I and I don't wanna, I've never said that we should ever spend down to to nothing, we need to get. Have our contingency fund, we need to, that's only good business practice, never below that.
Eric, if I could make a point, um. Something that I guess wasn't understood last week when we were talking about this is. Last year's twenty three, our cash receipts. Were two point four million dollars under our, or over, sorry. Our expenditures were two point four million dollars over our receipts. In addition to that, we've got two point six million in ARPA that's going away. That's five million dollars right there.
Yeah.
It takes us, it's about, it's a little over a million dollars a month is what it takes to rent the county.
Yeah, I was gonna address that too, cause what I see is if we. Do the combination this year, a little bit of cash and and tax, and we can slowly increase the tax over the next three, four, five years. And use a little bit of cash, but the goal would be to still have a good, healthy reserve. But to Connie's point, the ARPA thing is kind of void that up, and so. That that cliff's coming and we got some senior village reserves and we've got our reserves. So you've gotta reach that point where you're growing the tax, you just can't make a big jump, so do a little bit, a little bit, a little bit. And taxpayer can handle that better than than a big jump. So I think there's, that's that's the game plan, it may take a more of a. Pretty of a three or five year kind of plan, and if we get some growth in our tax base, that helps a lot. As a neighbor realization, if there's some big ones that come off, that would be nice, but they're always gonna be there. So.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion on terms last week too, because when we said investments versus assets. You know, or you know what those are, and that was confusing, cause I had never. Really had that conversation where. Investments was really touted as its own category.
It's not, yeah.
But I mean, we had never had that discussion, so that's what's confusing, I mean, when you, when it's the first time, you're just. You assume that it's, you're you're, we're talking about like senior village proceeds, but it's not, it's beyond that. So.
Right, and and also that um. I think a lot of people were confused because of that word reserves, it's being used in different ways.
We knew a lot of interchanging.
Yeah, and there's a difference between the reserves that each department has versus. The counties, you know, it's just, I think there was a lot of confusion.
But we have a total of, this is called non-budgeted funds. I mean, everything is not in the budget, CDs, senior village money, ARP and all that, we're sitting on. Close to seven million bucks probably right now, six and a half. It's gotta be a pretty good amount of money. And so it's taxpayers see that, you're like, well, there's plenty of money there, well. There's a lot of money there, but at the same time, that's half of your budget. I mean, so wipe out pretty quick, so I I think it's a matter of using just a little bit here and raise taxes, just kind of.
I think seven million's a little high on that, I don't think it's nearly that high.
One and a half senior village, one and a half ARPA, four million CDs.
And it's eight ninety seven or.
I'm not counting eight ninety seven.
The CDs aren't.
No, 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 yes, they are, they're non-budgeted money, it's money, it's not a budget, and yes, and. We can budget that money, we say.
It's not non-budgeted money, it is part of.
It's not budget.
It is part of the money.
Where's the budget, should we, where's that in the budget?
It's not, that's my point, and you, you don't get, you don't get to drive. The actual, like, the cash that gets spent is completely different. You guys can't say, oh, we're just gonna use this because it's sitting there.
Yeah, we can.
It's not in a fund, it's the real money.
No, but if we decide, if we say we're going to budget, which I'm not saying is right now, I say we're gonna budget somebody that said CDs, when they mature next year. We're gonna take three hundred thousand dollars of of those bunnies. As they mature into our budget next year, we have the statutory authority to do that.
But it's part of the cash and it's part of our, as part of our cash flow. Because we don't take all of the taxes in on December twentieth.
Right.
We don't take, you know, we don't have all of our receipts that come in one time a year.
It's your buffer.
It's the cash that we need to operate.
Yeah.
And if we lose two and a half million dollars of ARPA funds, we're gonna have to dig into that.
Okay.
There, and it won't be investments, it'll be, it's, see, that's the confusion, it's, it's a way that we make money on our cash.
I get that.
It's a savings account. It's, that's all it is, is it's a savings account, it is the regular money in the bank, it's just in a different account.
Is there anything by statute or anything or any policy that points out how much we have to have in that?
I don't believe so, but I'm, I'm not comfortable, I mean, you guys can all look at the camera and tell everybody. That if the county ends up, you know, in the red at some point, that that comes back to your guys' decisions.
Well, sure, it would be, it would be, yeah, it would be our decision, I'm not saying I wanna go there, but.
But that's what it boils down to.
How, how this system works.
But just to help us out, so. And I totally understand what you're saying about it, it's a place, cause your, your revenues are really two big chunks a year. Right, when the taxes are paid, that's the two main.
Those are the main ones, yeah.
So then. You know, during the course of the year, it's just like, a lot of industries, like firms like that, you don't get a paycheck every month, or every week, it's certain times a year. So. When you do have to utilize that, pretend ARP doesn't exist, you have to use that. You dip into that for two hundred thousand or two million? To, I mean, what's, what's typically the amount that drives it, and my second question is. Are there certain times of year, there are purchases that can be modified to make that cash flow more even?
It could, yes, and that's what Joe had mentioned that last week, and I think that's a great idea as far as that goes. But what's also happening is that. Our cash receipts are coming in much lower than our expenditures. So if they were two point four million dollars last year, what are they going to be this year?
Like.
And that's all so.
How much do you dip into that to help, I mean, you know, you, if you know you might be. Going to get in the red, you know, it's a million a month coming up, so how much do you dip into the uh, CD investments to? To make sure you're covered.
We'd just have to look at what was being spent and payroll, and like I said, it's a.
How much have you done before, how much have you actually cashed out?
Well. We haven't, because we've been fortunate up to this point, but we used ARPA funds last year. If we didn't have ARPA funds, I would have been cashing in probably half a million dollars.
Okay.
Or three, three million.
I would, I made phone calls and did some researches last week, um. Naco, um, who's just, you know, pretty good knowledge base, I found an article on their website. And they said you should have two months reserve, which is about sixteen, seventeen percent in reserve. I called the CPA who's done work for counties, they said ten percent minimum period, bottom floor, but fifteen season better. I called two city managers, one was trade, one I, another one I know. Asked that one had a much bigger budget than his, and they both said verbatim. Tens of floors never go below. If you get fifteen to eighteen, that's wonderful. And I compare the same ranges over and over, and these are people who, they live this life, you know, and they they deal with it, so. Um, so so figuring that out, if we're in a twelve million dollar budget. Do we wanna have at least ten percent of that as a floor? And if we have twenty percent of that, we're in pretty good shape, so to me. We're, we're really in great shape on the reserves, and there's probably a little room there to do a little bit of a haircut if we need that to help. Balance itself as we grow the taxes over the next two or three years, and so I think that's a a reasonable approach, but we've got senior village money in that too.
Okay. But we would look like at our, what we are spending, like again, is a little over a million dollars. So even if you're looking at two months, which I'm more comfortable with three months. You're looking at two months, then that's still over two million dollars.
Well, yeah, two to three months would be the same range that you're talking about as far as. What what that's good.
And that's, you know, depending on where we come in, you know. For uh, receipts over expenditures or if we're under again. That's, that's two million dollars right there, so that would eat into that amount. So if we, if we didn't account for that. Cause that's the other issue too, is. Those cities may be saying that or those people that you all talk to, but. Where are their revenues versus their?
This is national association of counties, so it's nationwide, what what counties do, what they recommend, yeah. And they, they got a big database, so.
That's, I mean, that's not much different than what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is that some of that cash is going away, so.
They were talking about our, some of county budget, not our, yeah.
That's what, ARP needs to not be part of this discussion, so you need to take two and a half million dollars out of everything that you're talking about.
I preface my comments with not counting ARP, so I agree.
And so how much cash does that leave us then? If we take ARP out.
Well.
So that was what I was gonna ask you, um, cause we hadn't talked last year, that ten percent number felt good, right? Of, of a overall general county budget, so that was like one point four million, and that's where we had. The reserve fund where we line itemed out our elected officials, remember?
Yeah.
And so. Of that, we didn't have, we're not currently at ten percent, so. Are you, is the suggestion, because I thought that's where we were of making that reserve with with parameters also, like. It can't be there for a minute, I felt like we kept getting. Every department saying, oh, pull this out of reserve, oh, we have reserve, right? No, like, we have a ten percent county reserve for the oh moments. That we're not expecting when they, you know, the air conditioner goes down or the house gets or the. Courthouse gets struck by lightning or things like that, and like. Let it be an investment where it's gaining interest, but it's sitting there, right, like, we don't. Then we feel good, right, and we have ten percent, if something happens, we know we're covered, you know. Is it, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, what's our number at now?
Three, four, well, without.
What's the percent?
Uh, I didn't do the percent, and this is the munch.
Oh, everybody.
And the difference really quick too, because the number here was our, ours. Versus the elected officials, because there was still that gray area of. If it's, if it's used. It's their authority and it's, it's gone, right, so. That's one of the things for me of like, knowing the commissioners have that buffer. And no one's able to just spend it.
When we.
Or offset their own budgets, or, you know, do the things that they can do. Um, we are three hundred and forty eight oh one oh nine. Uh, so.
I believe that when we started that. And last year was the first year we put into it, we were pretty happy with the amount that we put into that. And we had estimated it was three to five years before we thought that would be fully funded, am I right?
Yeah, because we didn't, we hadn't sold senior village and didn't have some of the other.
So.
But I was just asking for direction.
Well, I think if you add that plus in the senior village proceeds, cause that's, that's virtually reserved as well, I mean, it's actually have available. So I mean, you've got.
Yeah, you don't even need all the proceeds. You can, you can still have, yes, sir. Yeah, you would still have, I mean, if you, if you created the ten percent reserve and leave it alone. You'd still have a million dollars between the eight ninety seven and then senior village proceeds. Which I think would put us in a great position of knowing we have the, the ten percent reserve. And then we have that cash, my concern just is. How we incrementally do it to get there. When it's staring back at us, like, and 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 that's the equation I haven't figured out yet, cause last year. This exact same thing, sixty some, we supplemented six hundred and sixty six thousand. It felt better, it was less of a blow, right, but then the blows back staring at us this year, so.
It's expected, I think, it's gonna be.
So.
It'll be smaller.
And I mean.
Last year, we only went up. Two, right at two mils. And even at fifty seven, we're up.
I don't know.
Yeah. So I mean, that, that's a huge chunk, and that's not if we don't cut below that yet, but I mean. That's, that's a big step. In the scheme of things, I think. I'm very nervous at passing that, but.
We're seeing village, what's the exact amount on that?
One mil, one million four ninety eight, two ninety five.
Add it right to one point five.
Yep.
Short hand, so, okay.
Minus any negative senior village reserve or any senior village fund. It's negative two hundred thousand right now.
Yes, we need to actually funds that, basically to bring that back to zero.
And anything we collect. From. Previous to March one, we would just. We would move it into the general part, we'd do something like that, you know.
So what would your recommendation be moving forward, like on this, because?
You guys have a decision to make. And I know that I can't make it, that you guys have to vote to do it. So you either. Are gonna have to go in and. Figure out your sweet spot, if you wanna use some of the senior village proceed money and lower the budget if you just want to. I guess I don't have a recommendation because it's your decision.
Um. On the, on the proceeds though, like if we were to get the reserve whole. To the ten percent of what we wanted, then could we put that in a daily? Interest-bearing account to where, like the auditor explained, where you have access to it.
You're talking about two different things.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're talking about building that reserve, that's a fund.
Mm hmm.
That's the monopoly money.
Right.
That's not the real money, the real money is what we're talking about, that is at the bank that would match that.
Right, yeah, and I wasn't talking about yours, I was just saying, if we have, if we build up where we are with our reserve, right? So when um, when our budgets aren't fully expended at the end of the year, then we say, oh, okay. Um, HR did good, I'm gonna pick her on it, cause she's right here, like, she had five hundred dollars left, we roll it over into the reserve. That reserve though, my understanding from talking with auditor is that money. Could be working for us, is that not?
Yeah, because it was budgeted.
Right, it's budgeted, it's not.
Tax money would be coming in.
What, that we could. Get into an interest-bearing account to where it's growing. Because if we're growing cash, it feels easier to offset cash, right, cause there's a plan, like, oh, we grew two hundred and fifty thousand. Now we wanna lower taxes, let's do it, my concern is just what that. Forward thinking looks like before you run out.
I think any of those, anything that's. Been collected is, should be drawing interest, yeah, regardless what fund it is in, for most part.
And it is.
The real money, the real money draws interest, yes.
But not our, not currently our senior village proceeds or our eight ninety seven or our reserve.
Yeah, they're, they're in our, they're in the checking account, which is an interest-bearing account.
Okay, so all of those.
Real money.
Perfect, so all of those are in interest-bearing.
Because we already have that much.
And what do we know the? Rate on?
Four point seven five, I think, is the last.
Okay.
Not gonna do much better than that probably.
And that's, that's, that you have that right now, you can go get it right now, cause it's in the checking.
So als- also for. The R and R notice discussion. Cause that's the, that's the one we can never go above.
Correct.
Is it? I mean, is it better to put on there what it takes to to run the county? To be able to have these discussions, right? Because then it's like. You know as well as I do, when people see that, which we're, there's nothing in there. This is what it takes to run the county, right? So. It's easier to have those discussions of like, we are trying to figure out a way. To help you incrementally, because I know what's happened the past two years, you guys know what's happened the past two years, and inflation all the while, right? Of like, this is eventually. Where we're gonna be.
I think it's also compounded by, you know, road and bridges, a big chunk of the budget. And. I'm not gonna say I'm blaming Peter's commissions, I'm just gonna say the world's changed a lot. So we got roads and bridges designed in the nineteen thirties and forties. And fifties, nobody had semi in their forties. I mean, if they did, it was maybe one big truck, it was like a third of the size. And this equipment nowadays is huge. I met someone the other day on a small road, I was over in the ditch, you know, and it's okay, but. So I think reality is that we're trying, we're playing catch up. So, you know, the the commissioners back in the forties or fifties couldn't have anticipated that. So I think there's a lot of this is, we have a moral, our 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 county's got more of. Probably more bridges than most. I mean, Western Kansas, I've been out there, there's there's not many bridges. We have a lot of bridges, we have a lot of hilly roads and things like that. We've got the bluffs, so I think there's just a lot of endemic challenges that. Are presented to us and that we can't do it all.
No, but.
So I think that's that compounds the issue of deferred maintenance, deferred our facilities, road and bridge facilities, all the courthouse, all the workers had to have done. So you you can't just do it all at once, I think that's the message to the taxpayers that we're. Systematically, methodically, working through it, getting it done.
But we don't even have it all, I mean.
Yeah.
We don't even have hard, much of it budgeted for what the needs are, I mean.
But lots been done, that's a positive side, there's been a lot done.
There's definitely been an improvement over the past few years, a hundred percent.
And I think so if. I hate to slow down on anything, but maybe we have to do a little bit less on road and bridge, maybe a little bit less sheriff's office. Um, he has a lot of rollover. Um, you know, I know he. I guess we'd cut his budget, but at the same, last year, but at the same time, there were positions that weren't filled. There's federal inmate revenue coming in. He still has positions that aren't filled. Uh, I think some other departments made a couple of spots that haven't been filled for employees that are budgeted. If they're not filled, they're not advertising, let's let's reduce those for now, I mean. It's a lot easier halfway through next year if you get a good person, you know, go do a budget amendment and try to fund that spot. You know, Sherry's good about, but then reserve for next year. For the person she's trying to hire. I think between all the strategies, you come up with all city code with four or five hundred thousand dollars, you know, and that makes a big difference. And you've got the reserves, so just in case a major thing happens, a bigger conditioning unit or. Whatever might happen, but it is there for that reason.
Yes, and.
Mark, what is the? At the way it sets now, the amount of ad valorem we would need, the dollar figure?
Think I have that. It'll take you a minute.
Okay.
No, I think he's talking at the sixty two.
At the, yeah, at the sixty two, what what would that ad valorem be? We've got this number here.
Well, that's presenting, I want the dollar.
I think it's that, that's the thirteen million eight twenty four.
Yes.
Yes. And at fifty seven was that one? It's just fifty seven times two fourteen.
Most turn twenty four now.
I mean, two twenty. It's twelve million seven sixty eight. That looks pretty darn right. But the goal is to increase reserve. To give you the ten, twelve range over the, over three years, so we do enough to get. Maybe the eight this year, is that what you're thinking, or you're thinking it's ten? Then it's about one point three million, we got three forty sitting there, it'd be definitely all senior village in there with just a little bit left. It's pretty big dump, I mean, we're trying to gradually get there. It has to be in that budget, budgeted reserve right to help us. Right, Mark? At where we park that to help our reserve balance, it has to be budgeted, right?
No, not really, so.
It isn't, okay.
We, I just have to say that we're gonna use this cash. Into the, into the budget.
And does that reduce our, that helps our mill come down, right?
Okay, yes.
So it's based on the dollars of ad valorem that we need to raise.
Whatever you move in lowers.
Yeah. You either have to cut the expense.
Or find revenue.
Find revenue to offset the amount of ad valorem taxes.
What would occur is if you use the senior village money. We would not reduce the budget, but the budget is what it's gonna be, but you use the the revenue coming in to lower the. The taxes needed.
In our reserve. And it's budgeted money, but it would still be, well, sorry. It'd be categorized as reserve to offset.
Yes.
That, so if we used it to bump up to the ten percent. With stipulations of this is reserve.
Well, I think we're talking about two separate things.
Yeah.
Is. You, in in order to get reserve. You're not accomplishing anything because. You're moving senior village proceeds into your reserve, and then you're saying reserve is gonna offset your budget. Just skip that part and move the reserve into the budget and be done with.
Just trying to have your cake and eat it too. You're you're showing it at one thing and showing it here, and yeah, it's it's double counting.
Yeah, I think.
Let's make what Eric suggests earlier, taking part of that to actually fund the budget. And then have less we have to cut. So you said like six hundred or something like that.
Well, now, I I use that figure because that's what we had last year. I. Quite aware that that's part of the reason where we're at now, is because we're still facing that, so I wouldn't. I really wouldn't want to go more than that, because then we're even worse shape next year, so that's that's where I. Drew that figure from, and then I was using the rest, then how do we? That's the figure, which would be nine million or. About nine hundred and forty thousand is what I calculated that then we would need to either cut or displace. After you would use that much, and I was saying ARPA funds is what I was. Yeah, I used that, my six sixty six, so.
And if I could just ask a question so I can understand, cause you pretty much said exactly what my fear is of. If you chose six hundred thousand this year to use of of some of the revenue, that's what we did last year. And here we are, the exact same scenario, so we do it again this year. Then next year, we're gonna be in the same scenario, so I guess my fear is.
Wanna make it worse.
I don't wanna make, you don't wanna make it worse, but.
I I think what my my thing was on this is we can taper it off, because I. I don't believe that we can go from. Here to ten mils up. I I just, I I I'm. Every bone in my body says not to do that, especially when we're setting on so much cash, you know, there's. There's so many funds there and the public. Is looking at that and it's like, well. You're not only um gonna raise the mill level. You're you're not spending any of the cash, and then you're talking about all these spending projects that are coming up. I mean, I I think there comes this point of overload where. It's like, we're gonna say, hell no. Um. Cause that's one thing. That that's a heck of a job, uh, for any entity. I haven't heard of any other entity unless they've passed major school bond. Jail bond or something like that has ever raised ten mils in one, one.
And it stinks, cause that's what we're dealing with based on the past two years, right? Of like.
That's why you just gotta balance it out. I know Leavenhaugh, I think it was last night, some commissioners were there, I think it was Leavenhaugh County, I'll have to double check that. But they actually use part of their reserves to. Be able not to have to make the R and R, they actually use some of the reserves to.
Come in under the, to get.
To be able to do that, yeah.
But wouldn't that be nice to be able to even consider?
Expenditures happening either, so it's easier for me to do it.
Don't you think if you have, and I'm just trying to understand, but the. Sixty two point four seven is what it takes, right? That's what we've been.
That's what has been proposed.
Proposed, a hundred percent, yes.
There's fluff in everything.
Yeah, so if we can continue to cut down on that, that's fantastic, but so say you're sixty one, I don't know, sixty, whatever number you want to use. If you're actually levying the amount of taxes to run the operations. Then it gives a more clear picture of valuations go up, R and R goes down. For an. An argument against the R and R, what it's doing to counties, right? Because. Because right now, when we supplement with cash, it's like, it's hard to see that exact. For like, what it does to us, that if we were levying what what the operations are and then values go up and then they dropped us down, well. No, this is what it takes to run, you know, it's it's an easier argument, I guess, for us to the state to say, this is the. This is what you're doing to us.
And nobody there cares, when they get their tax books, it puts the dollar in that compared to last year.
Yeah.
I mean, all that other stuff's just. Noise, I mean, it's, it is confusing to a lot of people.
It is, it is, but also it's like, man, you. It's also good for the public to know. The taxes they're paying is running, you know, the operations, and then it's a clearer picture of, well, if we're levying the amount of dollars to run the county. And we put it out there, this is what it takes, and then something. It's a lot easier to know what's happening, right? Versus us supplementing cash to make things. Feel better, look better versus what they are. I don't know, I I just. I understand everybody's uh viewpoint, it's just, it's just stinks because. Just sometimes feels like when we supplement it with the cash, I mean, cutting is one thing, if we can cut. Then we don't face this next year, right? Of like. But. I haven't.
And all the budgets have the what if, you know, yeah, we can reduce this department by some, but what if this happens? But, well, the what if's the reserves. That's that's the point of having reserves. You know, there's a sudden change and all of a sudden, there's no inmates coming in from the federal or maybe. Ten bridges get washed out at once, I mean, that's 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 what reserves for, so.
If we have enough for ten bridges.
Well, FEMA's gotta help it now.
Yeah.
Eventually, right?
So maybe after our budget workshop this afternoon, then we'll have a better handle on what the actual is, if we're thinking we have more cuts.
Yeah. Honey, did you, I was trying to remember, in your department, did you have some positions that are still unfilled or not? I can't remember.
I have one that I need to fill, yes.
Are you getting any applicants here in my?
I closed it for a little bit because I wasn't, but I'm getting ready to open it back up.
Okay.
See what's out there.
Hey, we have um the June EMS report um that. Or he had sent to us, have a motion to uh file as received. Seconded, although the favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero. And twenty twenty five, five bit discussion. Um, we had, he was. We hadn't been until last week was the first one we did workshop.
We all were into one. We were so much workshops.
Well, the first, the first round, then the second round wasn't. Eric, do you want it to be workshop?
Either way works for me, I'm.
A workshop, I think we're gonna be recanted. And just go to workshop.
Um, right, so I would look for a motion to recess into budget workshop for general budget discussions and then maintenance.
Some of, say.
We've been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, we are back in open session, any unfinished business? Seeing none, county counselor.
Uh, tax sale will be filed on Monday, we always uh. Have to calculate the uh. The amount that's due and owing to a specific date, so. I can give myself a little time, but uh will be filed on Monday. Um. And I anticipated we would have the sale in February beginning. That's all I have.
Uh, any need for any additional executive sessions? During none, approval of this expenses, do I have a motion to approve this week's expenses? Moved to seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye. That's three to zero, public comment. Seeing none. Uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Someone, you said.
You've been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.